City Council meeting and council committee meetings are broadcast live and may be viewed live by the public on Optum TV. A rebroadcast may be viewed on Optum Cable Channel 4 in the City of Alexandria website. We have the invocation by Councilman Fowler and the pledge by Councilman Johnson.
Amen.
Pledge flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice our own.
Roll call please.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Feltzer?
President.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mr. Lawverdane?
Here.
Ms. Harris?
Here.
Madam President, your floor.
We have approval of the minutes. Motion.
Move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Fowler, second by Councilman Ballard. Any public comments? Public comments of the written minutes would like you to make comments on it. If not, in the written minutes, there will be no discussion or comments on the minutes. Consent and calendar. I'm sorry, discussion. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried.
Consent and calendar. Number one, introduction of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the low bid submitted for petroleum products and chemical additives for Wartzilla engine at Dejehana Power Plant. Number two, introduction of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to renew the existing contract for underground electric construction unit pricing. Number three, introduction of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a corporate endeavor agreement and co-sponsor the Man House program Coca-Cola Dr. Pepper Open Annacole Women's All Pro Golf Tournament scheduled for April 13, 2026. Number four, introduction of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to promote the City of Alexandria by entering into all contracts with bands and vendors for 2026 events and other matters with respect thereto. Number five, introduction of an ordinance relative to the Alexandria Healthcare Initiative, LSUA, to authorize the mayor to execute on behalf of the city those necessary or desirable intergovernmental cooperative endeavor and joint services agreement and other contract related to the Jackson Street Allied Health Downtown Health Services Central Capital Improvements, more particularly described as local or other non-state capital project matches to authorize the project, LSUA Downtown Health number 196022301F19002498, authorizing the expenditure and circumference of budget and prioritized fund, authorizing agreements, commitments, and drawdowns with the state of Louisiana through the Division of Administration and/or through the Board of Supervisors of Louisiana State University and Agriculture and Mechanical College, LSU, and other or through and with LSU Alexandria's foundation and other related parties and contracts and otherwise provided with respect thereto. Number six, introduction of an ordinance authorizing annexation of 6.896 plus minus acres track of land located at 2711 North MacArthur Drive and part of lots 54 and 55 of Experiment Plantation situated in sections 18 and 19 of Tomship for Knopf, Range 1 West Rapids Parish, Louisiana, AC1 Limited Commercial District, MFO Multi-Family Overlay District zoning classification is requested upon annexation for the development of a nursing home.
I need a motion, please.
Move.
A second.
Second.
Move by Councilman Fowler, second by Councilman Johnson. Any items to committee?
It's four and five illegal.
Can we do six to committee?
What's six in? What committee is six in?
G, resolution. Number seven, resolution to co-sponsor Zeta Phi Zeta Founder Community Foundation Scholarship Workshop at the Bolton Avenue Community Center.
I need a motion, please.
Move.
A second.
Second.
Move by Councilman Fowler, second by Councilman Johnson. Any items to committee?
It's four and five illegal.
Can we do six to committee?
What's six in? What committee is six in?
G, resolution. Number seven, resolution to co-sponsor Zeta Phi Zeta Founder Community Foundation Scholarship Workshop at the Bolton Avenue Community Center.
I need a motion, please.
Move.
Motion by Councilman Fowler, second by Councilman Lawverdane. Public comments, discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried.
H, ordinances for final adoption submitted to public committee. Number eight, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the low bid submitted for treated wood poles.
I need a motion, please.
Move.
A second.
Second.
Move by Councilman Ballard, second by Councilman Johnson. Public comments. Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome.
My name is Mr. Cornelius Lawson White Jr. I live at 3638 10th Street in Alexandria, Louisiana, 71302, and my phone number is area code 318-446-6934. I know Jules Green had brought it up about this treated wood because in our area, they had the Creosote plant. So I don't know if y'all looked into this and see if we could put anything other than this treated wood, maybe steel poles or...
I looked into it, Mr. White.
You didn't look into it?
Yes, I did. I spoke about it at a previous meeting. I went to Pineville. I talked to a supervisor over there who actually worked with those poles and those chemicals.
Oh, okay.
The people that I spoke with have been there like 30 and 40-plus years. They say they don't have anything, no environmental, yes, so...
Well, see, that's good. See, that's really good.
Thank you, Mr. White.
See, the people can appreciate that. And let's pray for Joe Fuller's family because he was a city councilman.
Yes, he was. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Number nine, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the low bid submitted for a minimum of one rear-loaded refuse truck, 25 cubic yard capacity.
A motion, please.
Move.
Motion by Councilman Fowler, second by Councilman Johnson. Public comments, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Number ten, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the low bid submitted for a minimum of one gravel truck for the sanitation department.
Motion, please.
Move.
Motion by Councilman Fowler, second by Councilman Johnson. Public comments, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Number ten, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the low bid submitted for a minimum of one gravel truck for the sanitation department.
Motion, please.
Move.
I need a second.
Sir.
Motion by Councilman Ballard, second by Councilman Fowler. Public comments, discussion.
I have a question. Mayor, overall, how is our sanitation equipment looking? Overall?
I don't know. You give me maybe a next meeting to answer it. This is a bid.
Okay. I'm just curious, just like to know, just overall, kind of give us an assessment of how our equipment looks so that people can...
When you say "looks," you mean...
The status of it, the status of it, workmanship.
If we're short or...
Yeah, if we're short, what do we need?
We're worried down some garbage trucks.
Just want a kind of idea where we are with that. All right.
You said you would get that information for him?
Yes.
An inventory or...
I'll reach out and see exactly what he wants and then we'll do it in court.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Number eleven, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the low bid submitted for a minimum of one shovel truck for the sanitation department.
Motion, please.
Move.
Second, please.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Ballard, second by Councilman Johnson. Any discussions? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried.
Number twelve, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the low bid submitted for Bissany Court Sports.
A motion, please.
Move.
Second, please.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Ballard, second by Councilwoman Feltzer. Public discussion, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Number thirteen, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the city attorney to settle and compromise the disputes in the matter at the ninth District Court entitled Terry Holmes versus City of Alexandria, document number 273418, and other matters related thereto.
Motion, please.
Move.
Second, please.
Second.
Move by Councilman Ballard, second by Councilman Johnson. Public comments, discussion. You want to discuss this, Mr. ...
Yes, ma'am, if you don't mind.
I don't mind.
Okay. The only thing, and my name is Mr. Cornelius Lawson White Jr. I live at 3638 10th Street in Alexandria, Louisiana, zip 71302. My phone number is area code 318-446-6934. Now, on these judgments, and y'all go into executive session, when do we get to see how much goes out? Or do we ever get to see how much goes out?
It's in the ordinance.
It's in the ordinance?
Title of the ordinance. It's 307,647,217.
Okay, that's fine. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried.
Number fourteen, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the proposal received from Util Services LLC for water distribution flushing programs.
Motion, please.
Move.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Ballard, second by Councilman Fowler. Public comments. Mr. White.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome.
Again, I'm Mr. Cornelius Lawson White Jr. My address is 3638 10th Street in Alexandria, my zip is 71302. My phone number is area code 318-446-6934. Now, on this, now, the mayor was talking about we'll probably be seeing brown water in our water and it'll be good to drink. So will they be periodic testing and everything?
I don't, this ordinance, Mr. White...
Yes, you did. You said...
Mr. White.
I'll just tell you what the man said. You can look at the tape. You can find out what he said.
Well, Mr. White, I'm going to tell you, this water distribution flushing program is for the firemen to go out to flush the fire hydrants, yes, to make sure that it gets all the residue or whatever may be inside the water. And that is why we do that, so that we cannot have brown water.
Okay, but what was the other thing with the brown water? When he, you don't know nothing about it?
It says that. It doesn't say anything about it.
This is totally different from that. That's what you're saying?
This doesn't have anything to do with the brown water that we discussed previously.
No, no, but there's a flushing. No, no, hold on. I'm just asking about, okay, this is a second flushing that we're having?
Mr. White.
I'm trying to find out...
This is routine. Flushing the fire hydrant is routine, not only in Alexandria.
Okay, well, what's this other flushing?
All flushings are based on the same thing, Mr. White. When you flush the fire hydrants, you're flushing out the residue, you're flushing out whatever may...
Yeah, flushing and all like that.
Yes, whatever may be inside, so that you can have water, decent water, that is not brown, that you're asking about.
Well, I'm just asking, okay, I understand what you're saying. This is the routine, because I've seen the fire department come by, because I've got a hydrant on my corner spot.
Yes, sir.
So I see them come by. But the other flushing, what about that?
That's the same thing.
It's the same thing?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
All right.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
Just one question. You'd answer the wheres for the fire hydrants. What is the occurrence of those flushes, Mayor? You may ever could answer that?
What do you mean the occurrence?
Often.
Oh, often.
The fire department is constantly in a state of flushing. That's what is part of keeping our fire rating number one, which we've achieved for the first time. We also have several other projects that flush that are separate from the fire department flushing that we've gone over quite a few times this year included, where we have the unidirectional flushing, so you're pushing sediment one way. We have several different programs that overlap. Two of those programs were already approved, I think this year. And this, the fire hydrant flushing is something that is a constant all the time. And so what happens is sometimes debris is stirred up by flushing.
Right.
And so if you know, if you see the fire department flushing in your area while it's necessary, it can be a upset by doing it. But that is a necessary thing to keep those fire hydrants and the pressure and everything correct. It also, as Madam President said, actually has a, has an effect on also keeping things moving. So while it's not part of the unidirectional and other programs, we do schedule in a way to follow that. So you try to, we're trying to maintain a process to push any sediment if we think we've caused somewhere out or identify where it is.
I have a question, ma'am. When we flush those hydrants, are those hydrants connected to mains that also run water to the homes or is it just a separate system just for the fire hydrants? Is all one system? Okay.
All right.
Madam President, can I have, may I ask?
No.
Okay.
You're done.
Fine, Madam President. Thank you. We have time, ma'am.
All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Number fifteen, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor toward the engine overhaul service contract for Dejehana Engines 5, 6, 7, and 8 to Motor Service Ugo Stamps, Inc., as backup service provider.
Move.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Fowler, second by Councilman Ballard. Public comments, discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Green, yes.
In reading the fact sheet, it says we're currently in dispute over with Wartzilla. There's no explanation for the dispute. May someone please tell me why we're in dispute with the manufacturer of the said items that we purchased?
I didn't know they had used the word dispute, but they do. So right now, we have in our Wartzilla engines, Wartzilla was the low bidder, and Wartzilla, who built those engines and actually supplies its own parts, the city, under the public bid law, has to bid all of our parts. And so part of bidding, as all of you know, you can't necessarily bid, I want a Dodge truck that is sold at such and such place because you're violating the bid law. You'd have to say the specs, and Ford and Chevy could both, you know, they can both bid on it. And while everybody may want one kind of truck, it doesn't work that way. In a similar way, but in a much more, I guess I would just say, a less practical issue because you're getting into very unique parts that are constructed with certain tensile strength, so how much heat they take. It could be off by just the tiniest amount and it would be a problem. Unfortunately, our bid law in Louisiana does not make any exception for parts even for our utility system at that level. So when we bid the parts, we get back on a separate bid, whoever's the low bidder, and they will bid in non OEM parts. And all of you know that's non-original equipment manufacturer parts. So just like when you have a, I can't think of the name of the most popular one, but the one that ensures your car, and you go and you call your warranty in and you go to the spot, they can use non OEM parts. And you say, no, I have this nice car. I want you to buy new ones. And they say, we don't have to. We can go get these parts. And you may take that to the shop where you're going to do it, and they don't want to use that part. They want you to get a BMW part or a Mercedes part for whatever your nice car is. You get into a battle about it. In a very similar way, that's what's happening here. We have a situation where Wartzilla manufactures the parts, and Wartzilla happened to come in as the low bidder, so we had a separate bid for the parts and then Wartzilla came in as a low bidder. Unfortunately, we can't hire Wartzilla, who built everything, in a professional service agreement to use only its parts. The bid law doesn't allow that. So Wartzilla, for the first time, because this is, we've been using non OEMs for a while, said, we're not going to work on engines unless you use our parts. Dispute. So we have them finish an engine five, we worked out a deal with them, these are for your other engines. My concern will always be and remains, and Marcus and I are working through this, having the assurances that non OEMs for the type of asset we have, different than a car, has to work at the same level. And all of you will know this too, at this level, there are international grading agencies, if you will, and they look at the parts and they determine that it's been tested and it has the same tensility or tensile strength, the ability with stand force, and all of those different things are in place. While I'm convinced that we're doing it right and these guys are doing the right thing, I remain a little concerned because of the unique nature of the Wartzilla engines and what I know to be the level of, Wartzilla's a fine company. I mean, these guys are doing the best in the world at this. And so if they don't want to warrant other parts, it's not warranty. So remember, those are, oh, we're out of warranty. One of the questions I should have settled for you first is, will this void a warranty? No. We're way out of time on that. But I still have to worry about the integrity of the engines and if any part that we use isn't. So remember, these are big companies that make them exactly the same. So you could have big manifold. These are like a giant Rolls Royce car engine, if you would imagine, but as big as this room. So all of those different things have to be looked at. Their handling number five, which tells you a little bit about the dispute, the fact that they're willing to use certain things to do five, is a little bit of a tell, if you will, on, well, why not do the others? But they want you to use their parts, bottom line. So we're trying to work that out with them.
Is litigation?
In the meantime, no, no, absolutely no litigation. That's why I was surprised they used the word dispute. No litigation. Wartzilla's doing that. What I think we're trying to work out is to make them change their mind and do it. We've done it in the past. I'd like to see Wartzilla do it. This other group, who is not Wartzilla, came in a little over, I think it's 300,000 of the next responsible bidder. They've worked for us before. They've serviced the engine before. The reason we want to do this now is belt and suspenders. Because of our requirements with MISO, to stay on time and have our engines fire as they're called on every day and be compliant with MISO, we want to have both in place. We'll continue to talk to them. There is no legal dispute. Wartzilla's not saying we're suing you or anything. They're just saying we won't work unless you buy our parts. We're constrained by a bid law that in this case, I think, antiquated is not the right word, I don't think the bid law, it is not the norm for cities to have a full muti as we do, Mr. Lawverdane, as you know, so it's just not something they consider. You can imagine that over the decades, people have argued this about vehicles too, and that doesn't make it, because people say a Chevy and a Ford, we're not going to let you only get a Chevy because that's what your guys want, or only get a Ford.
Typically, these guys...
This is different. These are different kinds of parts.
Typically, these guys can make these moves with private companies.
Yes.
And since we are municipal...
That's correct.
It does an equate job.
A private company can elect and say, we're not going to risk it. We're only using Wartzilla parts. And they're at the mercy then of however that bid is, because even though they're not required to bid as we are, they bid, right? They get...
We shot our can over the bow and we're seeing what we can do about it.
Well, R equal has to be R equal. It can't be anything else.
So these are certified by international organizations. Gary, if you imagine, they have some tube or part that goes on this giant, I don't know, give me a name of a part on it. What's the one we were talking about earlier?
A major part, that's the one that Wartzilla uses. That one?
I'm trying to give them a car comparison. Give me something like they have in a car. We do have big spart, there's a system of that. I was going to say, I was going to say carburetor, but I don't want to say that.
Water pump.
So a water pump. So they would test that. They would test that strength of that pump at all of those same pressures with tensility, the tensile strength of that has to operate the same. So they're going to apply that force, they're going to have an international rating agency say, this non OEM aftermarket part meets the same strength as that one. That's 100% an accurate report, so there's no dispute in that. Wartzilla just doesn't want to do it. So if you're me or you're Marcus, then your next question has to be, why not? And is, does Wartzilla do a set of tests that are more rigorous and is something we have to worry about? We have had a rebuild already. It has not been an issue, but I would never say, nor would the utility director say, that we don't both think that Wartzilla parts are better for Wartzilla engines than non-Wartzilla parts. The issue is, we don't have a choice in the law. We can't, what we'd love to do is, you'd hire Wartzilla in some sort of professional service, since it's the one doing it, and they would use their parts within it. We can't do that. We'd love to, but if everyone could do that, everyone would get around the bid law. You'd enter into a car lot management agreement, they would send you only their cars. That would be circumventing the bid law. You would never be allowed to do it. So that's where we are.
All right. So you're saying, so when we, when part of this council voted for these Wartzilla engines back, this was not seen to be an upcoming problem? And when you were using the analysis of cars, I'm looking at, if I buy Cadillac and they go and they want to put a Chevy part on, I'm going to have a problem with that. So that's what you said, the NOPs, nonoriginal parts, so, and they're going to test them and they should work comfortably. And a lot of the reason I'm asking all these questions because I read dispute. I didn't write the fact sheet, but I read dispute, and I was wondering where we were going with that. So if you're all comfortable using these NOP parts and to make, that's fine. I just wanted the explanation why dispute was in the statement.
I disagree. I think what you're saying is perfectly logical and I think it's a good catch that you made. But just look at the sentence, is currently in dispute over utilization of low bid non OEM. So it's, we're not in a dispute with them. There's no issue with us and Wartzilla. It's that Wartzilla doesn't want to work on the engines without using their parts. And without disparaging Wartzilla, I would say, one of these two guys said it, they're playing a bit of a hardball game to see what we'll do to say, we won't do it unless you do that, we were your low bidder. But the next...
But, ma'am, that's a difference without a distinction, actually. I mean, you know, if our engines need to be worked on and something breaks and they're saying, hey, we won't make the repairs unless you use these equipments, it kind of has over a barrel. Wouldn't you agree?
No. You said difference without a distinction. It's a difference, that's a difference. Here's the distinction. There's another group that can work on it. That group has already worked on our engines in the past. They just didn't win the bid this time. They're second low and responsible and responsive. Now they get a chance by what you do, because Wartzilla decided for the first time ever to play hardball. So it's the opposite of a difference without a distinction. It's just a difference. They're just trying to get over it.
I'm just concerned that, you know, we look at it all day and we can't produce power because we have motors that are, engines, generators that are down.
Well, there's a million reasons that could happen that have nothing to do with parts. There's catastrophic losses, all kinds of things. No one can guarantee against that. But the question is, when we built this structure, would you ever see these things happen? Of course you do. This is the constraint of our bid law. But we've already used this company in the past and non OEM parts in the past.
Without any problems. So, okay.
So you do have a backup if Wartzilla doesn't agree with everything.
I think what I would want to disclose to y'all in total candor, I just, in my heart of hearts, you'd want Wartzilla because they designed it and you'd want Wartzilla parts. But I would tell Mr. Green, if you're bringing your Cadillac, your Mercedes, your BMW in after the fact that you've got an aftermarket insurance policy, you can tell them all day after the fact that you've got a aftermarket insurance policy, you can tell them all day that you only want a brand new BMW part, but you ain't getting one, and there's no way you can make them do it if you have that after, after you've run your regular warranty period, you bought the, what's the?
Extended warranty.
The extended warranty company that advertises. That's where we are. We're after all that time.
Endurance. Endurance.
So, so we're after that.
Endurance.
Or you can pay the difference, or you can pay the difference.
Endurance.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Number 16, to consider following adoption of an ordinance authorizing the zoning of property at 3220 MacArthur Drive, Alexandria, Parish of Red Peace, Louisiana, from C2 General Commercial to I2 General Industrial District to allow heavy industrial retail sales.
Motion please.
Move.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Lord, second by Councilman Fowler. Public comments? Mr. LaFleur, Eric?
I'm here, yes, ma'am.
Okay. If you can have your three minutes. Yes, sir.
Good evening, members of the council. So I'm Eric LaFleur. I'm from New Orleans, but I'm really from Bill Platte.
How long?
So we're here, I'm here on behalf of Progressive Tractor Implement Company. I serve as their general counsel. They are, we have asked for a zoning change in order for us to locate and set up shop here in Alexandria. Progressive Tractor Implement Company is the third largest case agriculture dealer in the United, in North America. The owner is Thomas Swallow from down the street in Bunky. He's originally from Bill Platte, as you might figure, have figured that. And we, we were invited, the, the way the zoning was set up, it wouldn't allow us to operate a dealership to sell and service and instruct in equipment. So we're asking for a change in it. We did agree with the zoning commission to impose restrictive covenants on the use of the land in the event that we would ever sell it to someone else, so that we would only use it strictly for what our intended purposes are. And so I just, I don't know, I guess you have the ordinance, but we did work with them and get all of that, that straight.
I don't know if they gave the, I think y'all got the drive.
We did.
So I just would say, normally, what the senator is saying is correct. Eric's a former, longtime state senator. I think most of you know that. Normally, without of zoning, we can't force a deal. But in this case, they've offered something that has been accepted. So there's an offer on the table to put the restrictive covenant in, and we accept, the council will accept by this ordinance, and they're doing us a favor. So while they need the additional zoning increase in ability to have commercial, they have put all the things that they would never sell that property and not include in this restrictive covenant, and it's a whole bunch of things that y'all would agree with.
Similar to the deed restriction.
It's a deed restriction. So that's what they're offering, and that we're accepting. This is how it's supposed to work. It's a, it's a good neighbor thing to have local people come, open this up here, create opportunity for us, and then do this.
I have a question, Mr. Fuller. How many jobs do you think this is going to create? I think initially, we probably, would probably only have maybe a dozen at the very beginning.
That's good.
The, but the reason why we want to come to Alexandria, same reason you have central operations, Central Louisiana, I don't know if you still have that, but for a company our size with 33 locations and a bunch of locations in Louisiana, this was, this was the ideal location for us. And it opens up the door to do the, what you're thinking of, which is be, this would be much more than a small operation with much larger operation. It might have to include possibly the England, England, is it England Air Force Base?
Airport.
Airport. Because this would be retail, possibly corporate, but the, the fact that Alexandria is centrally located with highways going everywhere and an airport that has capacity for potentially for us to use it as our logistics center to ship out to stores that we have in, in Arkansas, Tennessee, Louisiana, and even soon in the Pacific.
Well, we, well, we thank you for bringing your company here. Even if you're hiring 12 employees.
Initially.
He's out, he's out on the steppens, don't he?
So, we thank you for that, Mr. LaFleur.
Is there anything we can do to help the process? Please let us know.
Help us deny, for sure.
Okay.
The company's growing, and it's, it's probably doubled in size in the last six or seven years, and so we have been looking for a place like this where we have the potential to help ourselves. What's that?
I was covering legal counsel. It's like double.
Thank you, Mr. LaFleur. We look forward to having your business here. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Before we adjourn, I missed the opportunity to remember Mr. Fuller. So at this time, can we please have a moment of silence for Mr. Joe Fuller?
Thank you. And I also would like everyone, I'm bragging about my brother and my sister-in-law, would you please stay in there, back home from Korea.
Oh.
And they have made my week tremendously well due to the fact that it was home for death, but just having my brother and my sister-in-law here with me eased the pain some.
I think before we adjourn, I think Mr. Johnson has.
Yes, he does.
So, y'all remember when I got elected and I came up here bragging about how good a basketball player I was? I said, well, my record's been broken, and tonight, in about an hour, my grandson get a chance to make his 1,000 points. He's six, he's six points away from 1,000. So he averaged more points than me, but he never would catch how many points I scored.
Your grandson.
Also before, I want to, I also want to dovetail on Mr. Joe Fuller. A mighty man. He's leaving a tremendous legacy. He was my dad's coffee drinking partner. And early in my legal career, I used to try to ear hustle on the conversations. He would put me out of the office, but as I got older, I was allowed to stay and listen to those conversations. He leaves quite a legacy. Chuck, you and, served with him. Jules, you served with him. I served with him for a year. And during that time, I learned a tremendous amount from that, from him. He leaves a legacy. I believe he was the community director under Mayor Schneider and was also chief of staff under Mayor Schneider. And then from there, he went to the police jury and served several years. And then from there, worked for Buddy Caldwell, the AG's office. And then he came back to serve as a city councilman from 2016 to 2020. He leaves an incredible legacy. And in the days to come, oh, I've also learned about some of his accomplishments. When he was on a police jury, and this was back in the 80s, our airport was at Essler, but he along with Mr. Lawson were instrumental in bringing the airport from Pondville to Alexandria. So, and he was also a champion for affordable housing. He was also known for taking trips and going elsewhere and bringing back knowledge that helped improve Central Louisiana, especially the whip board. So he lives, leaves quite a legacy. A mighty, mighty oak has fallen.